So our agenda for the meeting is as follows. We'll have an approval of minutes from October 20th, regular session. Then we'll have reports from the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the director of finance and administration. And then school committee member reports and building project updates. Then we'll have citizens' requests. Then we'll have our budget presentation number two, which is just a general overview of where we're headed as we kick off the budget season. We will have a discussion of communication practices on the school committee. We will have a discussion of COVID protocols. And also, the last item on the agenda is the Assabett Valley Collaborative Quarterly Update, but we're going to pass over this agenda item tonight. The quarterly update will not be ready until December or January. And we have no need for an executive session tonight. So we will begin with an approval of minutes from October 20th, regular session.
I'll move the minutes from October 20th.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion about the minutes? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Those are approved. So I'll turn it over to our superintendent.
Thank you. Good to see everyone tonight. We have a couple of updates related to our ongoing themes of social emotional learning and DEI. We will stick on the diversity and equity and inclusion work for tonight because there's a couple of things. And then at our next meeting, we'll try to pull forward a little bit more around the areas of our social emotional learning, where there's a lot going on as well. So I wanted to mention that the DEI team will hold its second meeting on the 8th. And they have actually been working on the assignment of reviewing the working draft of the strategic plan. And they'll be working in smaller subcommittee groups, providing feedback around their thoughts on areas where we could enhance, modify, or approve aspects of the work that they feel we're doing. So we get their feedback. And then, and that's not just the arena of the core area around diversity and equity work, but they're going to kind of give the whole plan a look and pick up. Because some of it spread across multiple layers of the plan. So I look forward to that meeting, kind of getting back together with that group. And Daniel had another update that he would share.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind, go on, good evening. I wanted to remind the committee that, I brought this up at the last meeting, that next Monday, November 8th, we're going to have Dr. Liza Tullisun presenting over Zoom to families and community members a workshop that's titled "How to Talk About Diversity at Home." And the notice went out both from Westboro Connects, who's co-sponsoring it with us, and also the school districts a couple of weeks ago for if people, in case people have missed it, that they need to register in order to attend the event. And then they'll be sent a Zoom link. We will send out a reminder later in the week, too, so that people have another opportunity to register. Thus far, we have about 100 people who have registered for the event. So we're very much looking forward to introducing her to the community and providing this workshop for people. That's it.
Yeah, thanks. Is there anything else, superintendent or assistant superintendent?
I'm handing them off to people. Sorry, I'm over here like...
Well done.
I got it, I got it. I'm done. Covered. Just keep moving along.
That's great. All right. So Director of Finance and Administration, Dave, do you have anything to share with us? I know you have some things later, but...
Just two quick updates. One, I just wanted to update the committee that our food service director, Jacob Martin, has put together a kind of a well-strategic plan for the opening of fails. He will be essentially bringing in an additional staff member from Chartwell so that he can essentially dedicate his time to fails and their opening and essentially make sure other schools are covered. We asked Jacob to kind of take this and think about, you know, how to service the entire community while, you know, the opening of a new school takes place. And he came back with a really well-defined plan. So we're excited about that and the fact that Chartwell is able to support us. So we foresee no issues. The other update would be is that on the Capitol, on the 8th of November, we will be presenting for the Capitol Committee. We will be involving finance, I'm sorry, facilities director and assistant director, Bollin Kelly. And we will be gathering our kind of documentation to put together a presentation at that committee. And we look forward to presenting our request.
Thank you. Andrew, welcome.
Hello. Okay, so I'm sure you're all sick of hearing about homecoming, but...
No.
Last week, it was a huge success. For those of you who don't know, this was actually the first homecoming dance for all the high schoolers, including the seniors. Because last year, obviously, COVID happened. And then two and three years ago, we had the winter ball. So given the success of the homecoming dance this year, the student council is really excited to making homecoming tradition once again at Westboro High School. And in addition to what Mrs. Buck touched on, the social emotional learning has continued at the Westboro High School, focusing on mindfulness and cognitive behavioral therapy. So at fails, due to the rain this weekend, the fails family fun day was moved to this coming Saturday, November 6th, from 11:00 to 2:00. It will still be held at the Hastings Playground because of the construction. And they're excited to move in to the new building soon. In addition, for the fails family fun day, NHS will be having student volunteers helping out there. And also throughout the next week, NHS members will be helping out throughout the community through the week for their fall day of service. Will be doing leafraking for senior citizens, volunteering at Community Harvest Project, a whole bunch of things. And yeah, teachers at Hastings have been doing parent-teacher conferences. And the second graders are running Operation Gratitude at Hastings, where they're collecting leftover Halloween candy and they're mailing them to troops overseas. So that's a fun thing to do. And yeah, at Gibbons Middle School, this last weekend, they, the students put on a production of James and the Giant Peach. This was fun. And that's all I have to report.
Busy. Good busy. Sarah?
Thank you. I just wanted to touch on that I'm looking into the Safe Routes to School grant that I had mentioned. We've gotten more details on it. It is from about $200,000 to up to $2 million. They're giving 10 grants, so we'll apply and see. And we had a meeting this morning with Buildings and Grounds and DBW and members of the Active Transportation Committee. And then a few of us actually walked around the school Fisher Street and the different side streets, thinking up what could actually work. So it's due December 1st, so it's a little aggressive. So we'll see if it's, you know, even possible for this year. But it does give us good ideas of what needs to get done around there in terms of walking and biking safely to school. So I'll keep you posted on that. And then the annual turkey trot is coming up, I like to mention. And we have lots of sponsors. So thank you, everyone in the community, for your generosity. We need more runners, so sign up now on the website. And there's plenty of t-shirts left, so you do not miss the deadline. If you sign up now, you'll be guaranteed a t-shirt. It's Saturday, November 20th, 9:00 a.m. at Westboro High School. Expecting good weather and a good turnout.
You can walk or run, so I'll be walking. Thank you. And that's good news about Safe Routes to School. So hopefully we can pull it together. We'll learn something going through the process. Thank you. Raghu?
Yes. Rotary Club, in conjunction with several other organizations, including Sustainability of Westboro, is planning an energy fair. It's a combination of educating the community on climate change and the effects of it and the technologies that are available to put our own two cents to help the cause, just to speak. So one of the ideas that was, that is being discussed is to have some kind of a contest in the high school where kids can participate and write or speak at the event about their thoughts on climate change. And at the middle school level, to draw posters, some artwork, to reflect their thoughts. So it's still in the planning process. Hopefully, it's, the energy fair that's being planned is on April 20th. So there's still a lot of time. So we are still in the planning process. And hopefully, we can come, I can bring what we are thinking back to the school committee and work out from there.
Yeah. And I think, is that Earth Day?
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, that's great. Thanks. Lisa?
So I believe the Where Is My Kid app is going to be coming out. Is it in the next week, did you think, Dave?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. So we're going to be getting instructions on how to set up the app for Where Is My Kid app. It'll be translated in five languages. It'll be Hindi, Chinese, Portuguese, Spanish, Arabic. And that will be for iPhones and Androids. So there's like two of each, depending which one you're downloading on to. And then just to, you know, I just want to commiserate with those that are affected by the driver shortage. Certainly, if your kid has been on time and buses are running smoothly, it means that you're not one of those six routes that is highly affected right now by the driver shortage. We're definitely feeling the effects of that. And some of you are being very much affected by it, either being on the bus longer or getting someplace later, home or at school. But NRT continues to work on trying to find streamlined routes so that they can make it work. But it definitely is a problem, and we recognize it and continue to work on solutions for that. And that is all for me tonight.
Thanks. Steve? Just have building project updates.
I'll do the update.
All right, so I just have one thing to share that several of us are attending the MAS-C, MAS-S conference over the next few days. So I look forward to having that event back in person and connecting with other school committee members and school superintendents. All right, Steve, building project updates.
Well, luckily, my list is getting fairly short because fail school will be occupied, Veterans Day weekend, all things being equal and what the equal is, a certificate of occupancy, which we hope to get by the 10th. A few things are being signed off. I was told today that the Conservation Commission signed off on the solutions that we have on the site. Part of the, the good news is with grass growing on a large portion of the site that was disturbed, the runoff from that is obviously clean. And the smaller part of the site that's still disturbed being the dirt pile that'll eventually be used to backfill the foundation of the old school. Things are moving along. Major construction is ceased. Punchless items are underway. The building is in pretty good shape, although I haven't been in it for a couple of weeks. But, and the office trailers are gone up the hill. And I think the fence is probably gone up there as well. So we're getting there, very close to being there. And I'm looking forward to having a much shorter week than I've had for the last couple of years. So, thank you.
That's great. Any questions for Steve? No question?
And we're still on budget.
Okay, that's a, that's a great question.
Oh, the contingency funds are pretty, pretty meager right now.
I will add one piece, just because I attended the faculty meeting the other day where we were kind of walking through all the entry protocols, first day start, packing. Mary Ann Standard did an exemplary job of just providing the structure and the continuity in planning. The meeting was very positive. The staff was really focused on just digging in and doing what they needed to do. And I think the plan will support enough time for them to get moved. And we also will be filming a video that will provide guidance to students on what their entry to the building will look like. And then it will get shared with students before the end of the week, before they then come on that Monday. And then would go home to families as well, so they would have a picture of kind of that arrival transition and get a sneak peek into the building for that piece. So I think those are all really excellent planning pieces. And should all come together, I want to give a thank you to Westboro TV for always providing such good community service to support those kind of things.
Great. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to citizens' requests. I don't see anyone here in the room who wishes to make a statement to the school committee, but I do have a written statement from a resident to share. And this is from Farah Aldrin, 214 West Main Street. She asked, please read the below statement for the public record. The survivability for COVID-19 in our town was 99.8% at the peak of the pandemic in 2020. Survivability can be calculated by taking the number of COVID-19 deaths in 2020, which were 39, and dividing it by the U.S. Census data for our population, 19,144. The best proof that masks can't stop our students from getting COVID-19 comes from your committee meeting on October 20th. Amber Box stated, "We are seeing an increase in absences right now, but it is just from the typical cold." Coronaviruses include some cases of the common cold and COVID-19. If there can be an outbreak of the common cold with the current mask policy, then you must conclude masks cannot stop a coronavirus. Westboro Public Schools Health and Safety Manual discusses air quality at length. The manual states, "Higher-than-normal levels of carbon dioxide are associated with closed spaces with poor ventilation. Masks are closed spaces with poor ventilation." The manual goes on to discuss many other ways poor air quality can be dangerous. "High CO2 levels can cause sleepiness, loss of attention, discomfort, and be toxic. Discomfort reduces both efficiency and morale. Discomfort can result in illness or other impairment. Symptoms include irritated eyes, heart headaches, lightheadedness, throat irritation, sinus congestion, sinus infection, and nasal congestion. I purchased a CO2 meter to confirm the air quality of a cloth mask. In less than two minutes, the air quality rose over 9,000 parts per million. Less than 5,000 parts per million may lead to danger..." Oh, sorry. I was supposed to say greater than. "...5,000 parts per million may lead to serious oxygen deprivation, resulting in permanent brain damage, coma, and even death. Masking policies don't stop viruses, but do increase the air quality to dangerous levels for 4,000 students and faculty in the town. The only option to breathe freely is to get a vaccine. The Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, managed by the U.S. government, reported as of October 22nd over 800,000 adverse reactions, 17,000 deaths, 86,000 hospitalizations, 27,000 permanently disabled, 10,000 myocardius or pericardias, 19,000 life-threatening events, and many other dangerous adverse events. The FDA recently approved emergency use authorization for a COVID vaccine for five-to-11-year-olds. One doctor's comment, "And their advisory meetings should put fear in the heart of every parent because it is callous and honest. We are never going to know how safe this vaccine is unless we start giving it. I have been provided two choices. Mask my children until schools are 80% vaccinated, which can cause oxygen deprivation, resulting in permanent brain damage, coma, and even death. Or vaccinate my children, which can cause permanent disability, death, and many more adverse and unknown effects. I urge the school committee to vote to provide parents and opt out of masking due to your own health and safety manual or provide options for parents. Otherwise, you are knowingly hurting our children and faculty, and you may cause parents to make hasty and uninformed decisions about vaccines that could impact their children's future." So that is a statement from Farah Aldrin, 214 West Main Street. And she sent attachments in the email and a longer statement, which I will submit for the public record. Thank you. We're going to move on to our budget presentation. This is budget presentation number two. The first budget presentation we saw last meeting was just an enrollment update. That's where we always start when we begin budget season. And so this is a very general overview of kind of where we are with the budget. And I think there are some slides that will support the presentation.
All right. Thank you. So David and I will work together. And Daniel, feel free to chime in as you see things. You've received budget presentation number one, which looked at enrollment and class size and their projections, beginning to track that information. Tonight, we look forward to stepping into this next stage. So our presentation overview for you tonight is both for you and for the public. We always try to frame this so that there's a steady repetition of process so people know we've been working at this for a while, that it takes time to move through the budget presentation, that we involve a range of people in those discussions. So we'll take a look at the timeline. I'll share the goals that guide budgeting. We give an annual review to those through WLT and think about our purposes of budgeting. We'll review 22 and 23 in terms of budget cycles because both of those have substantive impact on the development of this year's budget. And we'll preview anticipated impacts that we know and look at outlining next steps. So our budget timeline is really for those watching. I feel like you guys know it well. It begins in early September, where we start by tracking towards the October 1 report on enrollment. We look at the early implementation phases of special education services, ELL services, and we look at the start of the school year. This year, that led to us, of course, attending the Fall Town Meeting and making a request for some additional position support based upon changes to impacts at the Forbes House, but also on the ground for ELL services. So the budget, you know, to process that you understand is always alive and, you know, in review. The work from there leads into the meeting where we are today on the 17th and then, or I mean, on the 3rd. And then on the 17th, you see the large overview of the budget, all of the building-based proposals and some early numbers, leading towards the final recommendations that you'll see on December 1st. So there's a purposeful gap in time there for us to do a lot more legwork, to look at numbers, to work with conversations, and to meet with groups. You then receive that budget recommendation from me in terms of a final recommendation, moving towards your final vote on the 15th. So our budgeting goals are always grounded in some of these anchor values. One, the maintenance of excellence. We remain a fine district, benchmarking very effectively for the cost of our per-people expenditure in this district to be one of the top-performing districts in the state. Over 350 districts across Massachusetts make up the framework of Massachusetts rankings. We consistently sit in the top 20. We remain a very strong district because we have amazing families, pretty spectacular students, and a very strong faculty that's all well-supported through the framework of the budget process and town meeting. Respect. We work very hard to stay within the respect of all of those relationships that we share with family, faculty, students, and the community in the kind of interwoven process of being a small, inclusive town where we want the best for both those who live here at any stage of their life as well as those who've come here to educate their children. We continually work to manage costs and impacts. We really have worked to be strategic, to have our vision be forward-thinking while we also, you know, balance that with managing costs and impact. Meaning, we want to make good selective decisions about what we need to do when so we can strategically stage change and innovation to match our budgeting needs against the expectations of kind of the larger town and also our ongoing needs. This year, we add an important aspect of our budgeting goals, which continue to be a recovery from the financial impacts of COVID budget cuts. We've had both an inclusion of additional funds that have come to us through COVID, and we've had losses due to COVID. And the combination of those two have created kind of a perfect storm around trying to understand budgets so that we can then make good financial decisions moving forward. I just want to note that a big part of our budgeting process, where we're talking about budgeting like this, is to help people remember the past of those budget trajectories so you can kind of like get your mental framework and like, oh, yeah, that is what we did. And it also reminds those in the public listening kind of how the budgets intertwine year over year into long-range planning. And that's why I mentioned, it's always an ongoing process. So where were we? The first thing we want to do is we want to look back at the budgeting of FY '21 and '22. We have a clear budget history where we work to understand kind of the general overall fiscal request of the percent. This tends to be the way that our budget ends up getting framed in discussions, like, what was our percentage request? And so we track that so that we can come back and look at that trajectory. We also present data to compare our percentage requests against our benchmark communities. And that will be part of our future budget work as we move to preparing to talk to AFC and other town groups. Our history shows that we bring forward highly advantageous percentages that are responsible to both the town and to our needs. And I think we work to make sure that we can meet our budget goals while also understanding that we are being fiscally responsible. I do want to note that those that we're looking at, that the percentages of FY '21 and '22 were highly impacted by cuts and management that we did for COVID. So what did some of those changes look like, just to strike our memory? We made some mitigations that impacted the support to, that supported the town and ourselves in FY '21 and '22, where we just weren't quite sure what was going to happen with budgeting. We did some one-time offsets, which, as we all talk about at town meeting regularly, just as we echo at town meeting that you don't use free cash to fund your operational costs because it doesn't help you remain fiscally responsible in the long term towards having the budget you need. We recognized that, but made over the last two years some very strategic one-time offsets from community ed, from circuit breaker, and from the revolving account that allowed us to provide contribution to the town to keep our percentages low during the crisis. We also leveraged savings from the bus savings to pull the softball field article so that we would be able to have that burden not placed onto the town debt load so that we could have that as a piece of our, our contribution to the big ideas of keeping ourselves fiscally responsible. And you'll remember in the trajectory of kindergarten, then in FY '22, we took that kindergarten article as well and absorbed it in-house from bus savings that we had and not money spent on subs in that year because we were closed to give us financial offsets to the portion that should have been covered in that gap year by a warrant article. So we had $500,000, I think it was $500,000 or $800,000. So we had $500,000, I think it was $500,000 or $800,000, I think it was $800,000 in a warrant article. And we actually pulled that article because it allowed us to then not put that on the town and to be able to let that coverage move forward. Hopefully, all pieces that seem familiar to you as we remember them.
I remember the kindergarten article. We kept sort of reducing it, like there were a couple times where we were going to ask for $800,000, they were going to ask for something else and something else, and then we were like, no.
It was one of our most complex transitions, and I think as you look back on transitions, the work to do that collaboratively with the town, I think, remains an example of the kind of collaborative work we do to kind of come together and do what makes sense and what's the equitable way to move forward. I think that's good work. So this budget came in, so this is the current budget year that we're in, FY '21, '22. It's a 4.94% budget. It had been up over 5, and we made cuts to the budget and did some other transitions. We actually pushed some of those K teachers back onto the K revolving account to expend the use of that revolving account, where there were some existing funds, to spread out the implementation of that tuition account closing out, and it allowed us to bring that number under 5. This was voted unanimously at town meeting in May without any questions, because I think the town, we worked very closely with the Finance Committee and the Selectmen. I think the Finance Committee was very supportive of recognizing that you could see that we, other than the $50,000 restored for technologies, had done a lot to provide offsets across all of our budget arenas, basically leaving just the increase in the salaries, which was mostly the addition of the K teachers that needed to come into the budget that year. And I think the town demonstrated, you know, a good memory and an acknowledgement of that process, and recognized that we had brought in a budget that basically needed to absorb that transition, and that's why that number was bigger. It also came along with the implementation of the new contract year one, which was a bump in that percent as well. I think Dave has a record of that percent. So if we look at this, you also see, are you picking this one up, or are we doing this one?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay. So Dave compiled and went back in through our work and looked at the COVID, when we built the FY '21, '22 budget, it still carried all of these cuts. So recognizing that we needed to bring that number down, these are all over the two years of time, although we also had some additional technol, you see the $150,000 technology cut was done over two years, FY '21 and '22. So this constitutes changes we made that need to recover slowly into the budget, in some cases, over the next several years of budgeting. So what do we know now? So that sets the stage for what we know were the issues of FY '21 and '22 in terms of the financial work that we did with the town. So what we know now, as we look into developing FY '23, is some of the preliminary numbers that are kind of known. So technology remains the backbone of the Westboro Public Schools and so much of our instruction, infrastructure, teaching, and daily life to provide for all the services across the town. As I said, we know, so there's two pieces here, a restoration of cuts that need to happen over time, so you can anticipate in FY '23 some target of a funding return for technology. That number's to be determined. Last year, in FY '22, we put $50,000 back in. And then you have new contract costs.
A little bit of added information here related to the FY '23 anticipated restoration of technology cuts. The Technology Director, John, is currently working on an assessment of kind of needs throughout the district, but also doing a little bit of forecasting out as to what potentially is coming down the road related to technology advancements and needs to make sure that we're not, I guess the best way to describe it is progressively pursuing an ultimate goal of being where we should be technology-wise. One added, one added additional expense that we should be cognizant of is that the Xerox lease that we have throughout the district is expiring this year. John, who I'm seeing him in his, in action, is very cognizant of negotiating fees and partnerships with these vendors, is currently in negotiations with Xerox related to an extended contract, most likely three years again. The number that you see at the bottom is an estimate of around $70,000 per year. That is approximately 3% to 5% increase from what we currently pay. And again, if it was a three-year negotiation or three-year contract, it would be somewhere around, anywhere between $210,000 to $250,000. So we just want to say that that's probably outside the increase that we would go for, that is just one of the hardships and the, you know, the issues that we deal with related to leasing equipment district-wide.
Can I make a comment on this? Is there any way we can try and, you know, in this digital world, there's no need for paper copies anymore in many offices? And is there any way we can work on changing the practices? $70,000 for just copying is a lot of money and paper and good-for-nothing, you know, climate-wise.
Sure, sure. Maybe Daniel can chime in as well. I mean, I think, I will speak on behalf of John, that over the last several years, we have moved, you know, large portions of the district paperless. We're currently in transitions at central office, where we scan lots of documents. We're on a trajectory right now to move our personnel files to paperless. Like, we're definitely on that journey. There will always remain a differentiation at the school-based level, where paper's a part of our industry, just given the quality of what schools are and the range of student needs. We certainly have reduced it over the last several years, and one of the things that John has done is also consolidate copiers and eliminate a lot of the color copiers. And we've moved a lot of our work to digital presentation in the classrooms. I mean, I think it's definitely a lot less than it was, but there will still remain in a district of 4,000 students, kind of an active phase of copying that has to happen.
Yeah, I don't know what the historic numbers look like, but, I mean, you cannot have elementary school kids without paper. You need to see their handwriting. You need to teach them how to hand, how to write, and you also, you need to see, and I think this is probably true even at the high school, there's some things that you want them to be writing, and you want to be able, you can't walk around a room to see how kids are progressing if it's all on screens. But I do think that there's been a substantial reduction in paper, that like assignments are handed out through Google Docs, and then they look at, looking at the assignment on the screen. And so at the secondary level in particular, there's, there's been a reduction.
There's an interesting picture here. I'll take you back. It's kind of an interesting, it's little, but it's kind of interesting. So you see that student there in the triangles, the work is posted on his laptop, and he's submitting it, the answers in, but he's doing all the work on a whiteboard. That's in a middle school class I was just in, and they were working in groups on the problems, and they were all kind of like doing their calculations, doing all their estimates, talking, and then they were submitting in their Google Classroom. So, you know, I think those illustrate kind of a lot of the shifts you see us making. But we can certainly ask John to make that a piece of his report when he comes to you guys.
Because wouldn't we see a decline, rather than a three-year, $70,000 per year?
This is for the machines themselves. So this is for the actual, this is, like, this swaps out, this is not paper. This is machines. This is the actual copiers.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
The cover of maintenance.
I was gonna, I want to add that, related to that. It is actually the technology and the maintenance. And unfortunately, because of where they are related to the lease, if there's opportunity to extend that for one year, we may, but John's kind of investigating that, but Xerox is kind of doing what most industries are doing, and they're pursuing their opportunity to increase their revenue. So we may be, pardon the expression, but victims of the market and what's going on related to supplies and inventory and maintenance of products and things like that. So John's doing his best to kind of pull it back and say, you know, what are some of our options here? But again, we don't know. He just started talking, and that just came up on our radar as a.
I mean, John's a completely paper-free guy, just himself. So he's definitely a fan.
But is this an increase, or is it part of his budget, current budget? That's my question, really.
He doesn't carry this contract.
No, he does not carry it on his budget.
It's in operational O and M.
Yeah, because this district, I mean, it really is kind of splitting hairs where you put it, but it would, it's not sitting on John's budget right now.
No, it's operational costs at the district level. It actually, two years ago, Irene moved these to the building level, remember? Because it changed the delineation of this, of the building-based budget totals at the bottom of their school-based spreadsheet. People were asking like, why the building-based budgets had leapt in certain areas? It was because she broke that contract out and actually showed it across each school, what the impact was per school. She shared that contract out because it was better operational practice, and she had kind of held off on doing it because she just, you know, it just, it just bumped those budgets and surfaced those questions, and she'd had them all consolidated at, I think, the office level at Forbes. So it was a cleaner.
I think the question that Lisa's asking is, is that $70,000 an increase in cost, right?
Yeah, it's anticipated.
It is. What I did was, the current rate, I think, is about $63,000. So I've just increased it based on what I think it may land on a percentage of what I've been seeing across the districts, other districts. So the goal is to kind of remain where we're at, at $63,000 per year. But again, that's an estimate of $70,000.
So it's not the delta.
It's not.
It's the total per year.
Total per year.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
Yes, my apologies. Yes, it's not the delta.
I was like, we have been leasing Xerox for a while at $63,000, so that's good to know.
Yes.
Thank you. Good questions. All right. Makes me happy I picked that picture before there, too. I was feeling pretty good about that. I'm like, look, I have a whiteboard in use. And so the other known cost looks towards transportation, and I'm going to let Dave highlight this to you.
Sure. So transportation contract with currently, with NRT, our current transportation company. I think it's best to highlight first, because I'm sure people are wondering. We are starting to negotiate with NRT related to credits and refunds related to this year's double runs, delayed service, missed, absent drivers, so on and so forth. So we're working on that. The current transportation, sorry, agreement basically is, it's a multi-year agreement. However, this year is at $2.7 million. When I spoke to NRT related to the increase, the increase for transportation is related to CPI or Market Index. And right now, at July '21, it's 4.3%. I asked if it's fair to budget at that number, considering we're going to be budgeting for next year. It is my understanding that CPI does not come out until late July, so they would most likely stand, hold that mark standard. I will be mindful of that and keep, keep an eye on that going forward in case anything changes. So the estimated increase based on this July 2021 CPI is about $120,000. So that would bring us for next year's, that is, all of our buses, all of our vans, after-school sports, to $2.8 million. So while it's a significant amount of money, the increase falls in line with the other districts that I have kind of surveyed as to where they're at. What I wanted to do is present you also with what it costs per bus. And that is essentially our, I think it's worth noting, I should say first, that that number at the bottom is just related to the AMPS service. We have multiple different services related to vans, after-school, sports, things of that nature, but just for the AM PM runs, we pay about $1.4 million. If we were to add an additional bus for those runs, you know, which is open for discussion, and again, analysis of routes and complexity of routes, and I guess efficiency of routes, I should probably highlight the most, it would be about $62,000 increase to add a bus. If we were to add a, if we were to just enhance the bus across the 2.7 million, it's closer to $114,000.
So just to, it doesn't mean that you'll see a request for an additional bus, but it's into the discussion of just all the different pieces of what budget pieces could come forward in our final recommendations. When we were growing very quickly, we added a bus a year, if not two. I mean, and Irene standardly carried a bus in the, in the contract and in our budget so that we would be able to respond quickly. We currently aren't. So again, like, we dropped that amount of the $100,000 in Circuit Breaker that we used to hold in case we had it. We also then dropped the additional bus, which, you know, again, at this point, I think is a safe recommendation. It's not a number that we couldn't respond to in an emergency and then bill it in a following year if we had to, but you only get so much capacity to really respond in that way. Sometimes we find with the busing, like, he's looking at the short routes now. We used to have a very aggressive billing process with first student, and we didn't pay for anything where they had, they dropped a sub-driver, or they didn't, they did a double run, or a bus didn't run, and we reviewed, Cindy reviewed every run. So we're probably going to intensify, that's the look he managed now, and see, you know, we'll get a, we'll get a guestimate, like, okay, based on dropped runs, if we had to add a bus next year and we didn't carry it, would we, would we find the difference there and be able to be okay? So it's the type of discussion we're having right now as we look at all those numbers.
Just one quick final comment about the buses. I think what we've discovered, or we're starting to evaluate as we discover, is that, to echo what Amy said, related to the additional bus, I think it would behoove the district to essentially work on a substitute model, which would probably solve some of our issues. I don't actually think the actual bus is the issue, or adding the bus. Based on the current staffing issues that are statewide, it probably would behoove the district to consider some sort of staffing model or some sort of substitute model, whereas we had backup drivers, and we could ask NRT to support us with a bus, because what they are short of is drivers, they're not short of buses. So it's just another avenue for us to look at, to not actually increase the cost of that much, but saying maybe as we set up some sort of training system, where we get some, some of our local constituents to be backups or substitute drivers, maybe be able to offset that cost significantly.
And I just want to remind everyone, we've mentioned it here before, but we're reminded daily that the ridership on our buses right now is considerably higher than any other year ever. That's what we've been told. Because I want to remind you also that a couple of years ago, we had a consultant come in and review the runs, and he thought we were not quite efficient, that we might have been able to cut a bus at that point. But remember, that was right around the time where we changed the times of Mill Pond, and it really complicated our transportation system. But then COVID hit, and then ridership is up very high, and they're seeing it across the state. It's not just Westboro.
Fascinating.
And it is fascinating. And part of it is, we thought, as we were analyzing that, that possibly people in Westboro do not want to travel in traffic, which has become more of a problem here. And evidently, it's happening in other places as well. And because of the change of way people work today, more people are sending their kids on buses. It is a very interesting transition that they're experiencing with NRT overall across the state.
So it's going to be very interesting just to continue to play that out. I think this year will give us the trajectory of those numbers, and we'll keep you updated. Remember, when you vote this final budget and send it to the town, we keep a live and responsive planning loop that if we had to request an amendment or look for something different, we between then and town meeting to continue to work with AFC and you guys to keep understanding where we are. So I want to take a moment and also talk about a piece that I haven't quite finalized how you'll see this in budget as we come forward. We talked about this, which is, and you can read this more at your leisure, just in your minutes. We, we've definitely seen a transition in the complexity. We've always had a range of complex learners, and we've, we do an incredible job to program every student here in Westboro with their needs by designing specialized programs or specialized support, or hiring the kind of expertise we need to be able to support all ranges of learners. That said, there's times we still place students to therapeutic settings where there's just a reasoning why that is what a family or student needs. Currently, we have probably four additional students in district that have required a level of support that pushed on the building-based capacity to provide coverage. And therefore, the response that we came up with, because we, one, it's not a first choice to go to outside therapy-based placements, but you can't even get them right now. So we have a student that we thought was going to transition, who we can't, who was even like a year ago, as an example, was looking at a different placement, and a lot of these, a lot of the, the. And a lot of these, a lot of the programs are not taking in students, they are short-staffed themselves. Like, the crisis around staffing, and we've been reading about it everywhere, is particularly complex at a lot of these therapeutic day placements and residential placements. And therefore, you're seeing long waiting lists, complexities, and then programming that we often end up not being as satisfied with in terms of the capacity to do it on the ground here where we can keep a kid close to home, work with the family up close, and have those benefits that have made us very committed to building an at-home model where a child that's being raised in a community goes to school in the community. So we responded by developing basically an intervention team. We used circuit breaker funding in the tuition prepay from last year. We get a portion where we can pay a couple of months ahead. We took that, it gives us that buffer to respond to changes in programming, and we're building this team. It's a skilled BCBA and a skilled school psychologist, and they basically are functioning as a district-wide intervention team where they can kind of do crisis intervention on the ground, provide rotation and respite for a team. So if you have a team that's working with a set of complex students, they need rotation breaks and, which is one of the big benefits when you have a large therapeutic program, is they can rotate their teams. So you're not always needing to work with one student for your full workday. You can take breaks or rotate to other work, or you've just got additional support. I think it's a very good innovation model. It speaks to the design that Sheri Stevens, Director of Student Services, and her team think creatively. And so this is currently being implemented. We might be able to carry it on grants, we might be able to carry it on officer, we might be able to move it into budget. I'm not sure how it will show to you, but I anticipate we would need it through next year at least. We certainly see, as we've continued to talk about, an increase in social emotional needs of students. Certainly, I don't see that dissipating anytime soon. And we're not talking about the generalized social emotional needs that we have in a range of students that are part of our SEL program and lesson support. Like, that's just across an array of kind of tiered support that's more typical. These are pretty intensive needs, and they require some specialized interventions. So I think it's a good example of how schools are always continually evolving to the, to the needs right in front of you. When your basic product is live, individual, and you're a human resources industry, there is no such thing as kind of status quo. It's just constantly, constantly changing.
Was that an increase?
It's in there, it's in now.
It's in now.
This is a crisis hire done now.
Okay.
Using right now, circuit breaker funding.
Okay.
Because we had no choice.
Obviously, you can't fund it that way.
I, like I said, I'm not sure in what version you'll see this in FY '23. I'm just telling you that it's an intervention that was exercised now, and we will have to find out how to, if it needs to be sustained, what that would look like.
Okay.
So it's part of one of the big discussions Dave and I are having, and we're looking at a whole array of options.
It's good to have no surprises.
No surprises. There you go, it's right there for you.
It's also, it's also indicative of the fact that, you know, our, our speed budgeting happens now.
Right.
And then the way of the world in related to out-of-district placements and appropriate settings for students, could that change between December and September?
Right.
You know, and if that changes for the positive, then it may or may not be necessary, but we need to plan accordingly.
So typically, you know, the way that I think we do strategic-based planning and budgeting is it would be smarter then structurally to place that on a grant. And then if we didn't need to carry it forward, we'd rotate those grants funds to something else versus, you know, budgeting for it now. I feel like it needs another year of rotation, but it would probably need to be carried. So the question is, what moves in and off of those grants in order to make that all work? So the layers of complexity of a school-based budget are, I mean, you know well, but trying to do that quickly when you're also live in the development of this year's budget when it's November 2nd is, you know, is, is always an interesting and appropriate challenge for us.
There were 34 additional enrollments, right? What's the?
So there's, we've had, well, we've done, we've enrolled a lot of students, but this particular intervention looks at four intensive cases that require a support across two schools.
I think he's looking at the first bullet up there.
Oh, the 34 additional new, yes, those, yes.
That's net over last year.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Some of those are, again, return from homeschool some, but move-ins, which is an annual part of, you develop your budget and then you see who moves in. So this is one of those cases, yes. Sorry, I didn't.
That's hard.
I should have explained that.
618 is the total of the IEP. And then the 34 was inclusive in that 618.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think I remember Sheri Stevens giving us that total, but she had already included the 34.
34 in that total?
In that total.
All right, thank you. Good questions. So whether, as we look at kind of the other known components of our budget, Dave, I'm going to turn it back to him to look at this.
This is just a, based on the current contract with the teachers' union related to fiscal year increases. This will be a little bit of a joint effort between Amber and I. Amber will probably talk a little bit about the history, which is, as the new guy, a little vague to me, but at the same time, I think this slide basically articulates that historically, based on a previous slide, our ask had been anywhere between 2% and 5%. But I think this slide really articulates that, based on the contract, that the, on the last day of school, the teachers' union will receive a 0.5 increase, which is, it's not an actual check, it's basically the roll-in to next year of their, when the salary starts, based on their contract. And then at the start of their contract, they will receive 3.5%. So essentially, a 4% increase for teachers for next year. So the teachers being a bulk of the, the majority bulk of our, our staffing, unfortunately, we have to prepare for that from a submission of what our overall budget increase will be. So I think this is a good slide for us to kind of not only prepare you with the, with the number, but also be cognizant of the fact that it's an effort to, even our, our salary range between other districts that we have comparable. And I think the history is something that Amber can speak to.
Yeah, I mean, you've got your negotiation team here.
Please, grab the mic.
Correct the note, it's 0.5%.
Oh, my fault.
It's either 0.05 or it's 0.5%.
It's 0.05.
And so I think, again, smartly negotiated and shared by the negotiation team of teachers to really look at mitigating impact while also being committed to getting those salaries moving forward. And we did a good study on that work. And as you well know, that we look towards remaining competitive so that we don't lose faculty that we value at a high level. We want to stay close to salaries of comparable districts around us. Specifically, we think about Hopkinton, Northborough, Southborough, Shrewsbury. You know, those are all areas where people look to live, work, and, and so we really want to maintain that competitiveness. And I fully anticipate we will open negotiations, we're going to get that letter in January, opening negotiations, because then next year will be FY '23, the last year of the contract.
I think I'll add that the negotiations that we went through that created the schedule that we see here was, number one, in cognizance of other salary negotiations in other towns. But as a result of that very amicable effort, this town saw no problems other than COVID problems during this last year and a half as a result of our settlement. And I think our strategy paid off in the sense of having the ability to negotiate directly with teachers for all of the problems that both sides had to experience during the pandemic. And I think we did well.
Well, we certainly, again, I think, have a very collaborative group, and I think, unique to Westboro, try to really focus on staying in relationship of shared work. I think we negotiate in good faith and have hard conversations, and the negotiation team, the Labor Board group are all, you know, really collaborative professionals. And I think that's unique to Westboro, and it takes effort to maintain all of that because they're hard conversations. So when we look at that, those are the impacts kind of of the major known increases. We always also present to you requests. Any district and district leaders will work to request program needs and innovation concepts as part of the annual budgeting process. For those of you that have been on the board for a while with us or have tracked budgeting, we take all of those requests and we visualize, and your request has always been not to cull those out or to do any changes to them, but you want to see every request, and that's what we're presenting for you here today. I mean, there's been years when you had a lot. This, this year, we're going to look at these, and then you remember, the process is, we'll start having David and I some meetings with those leaders and ask them to prioritize them in order of impact from most desired to, you know, whether or not they could be a near-future discussion. And we'll use that to then lead towards final budget recommendations and, and again, discussions with you. So here you see preliminary requests. They're pretty. Someone's calling in a request.
That would be my daughter. I don't think it's, she's going to get it from you guys.
I think you can see here a variety of like, 0.5, 0.2, 0.1. Some of these are modest increases of existing FTE and others are full-time FTE. We'll get additional detail on all of these when we do our individual meetings with them. You know, you'll see a range of requests, and some will end up coming forward and some will be moved to alternative years. And we'll probably provide some additional, as, once they're tiered, we'll then come in and give you kind of more detail on each of them. If you look here, you see kind of the 0.2s, which is the typical kind of framework of increase at the high school as they add sections with growth to maintain their schedule. And you see the request for the Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator, which has been funded for the last three years through innovation, the innovation position that we leverage to explore new concepts and ideas and work with faculty. That's where we provide, and I think structurally, that's where faculty apply for the innovation position or district leaders work with faculty to put together a proposal. If someone is selected to move into that innovation position, they basically take a year leave of absence from their classroom. We do a long-term sub in the classroom space while they explore the addition of the innovation work into the district. We've used that to create the Makerspace Innovations at Mill Pond. One year, we had a technology innovation and, I think, I'm trying to think what, we had a co-teaching strategic coordinator for a year, actually, two years, and then this Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator to support the implementation. Again, you approve this as part of the Social Studies Review Process. So an interesting way to let us explore impact and to do good work, that innovation position should rotate back into the open fold for the, the structure it has provided to us as a district, and then this would become a position. You see some additional, that request, the additional District Student Services Coordinator is a restoration of a cut that you got to, that we'd made two years ago during staffing. And that was an admin position cut two years ago in FY '21. So that's a return for that. And you see an additional clinician. So this is the kind of requests that come forward right now that totals, in estimation, $543,000. So as always, you imagine those are going to get tiered out to different levels of focus.
What, what role would a clinician be at Mill Pond?
I would imagine we'll meet with Peter and get the detail on that after he prioritizes. It might be, I would imagine, it might, I don't think it's a guidance, it might be another social worker intervention. I am not sure what he's going to provide for detail till we meet with him. We just asked them to make sure they submitted to us all of their requests so we could put them into the budget financially for you now, and then we'll start those meetings to break them out into tiered requests.
Would this be like their operational budgets would just roll over as is?
So when you, when, at our next presentation, you'll see their operational budgets are level-funded unless they have them in here as special item requests. So they typically make, now, we, during COVID, we used to annually provide a 2% increase to that base of their building-based budget, and over the last several years, we've level-funded them. So they'll be level-funded again this year, given that we have a 4% rollover in the salary as, as a big focus. And so I don't anticipate you'll see that increase till maybe the following year if they need it.
Okay.
We have made some additions along the way, when, like, for example, we adjusted the high school budget, I think, a little because they had, they had some, they had some real, they had enrollment growth when, when that group bumped up there.
I would love to know at some point, and it doesn't have to be now, the difference between a curriculum coordinator and the several department heads of that subject. I'm not saying that we don't need them, I'm just saying that I'd love to know the difference in those two that exist and what is their different role.
Sure, sure, sure. Daniel can give you a brief explanation.
Well, we have department heads at the secondary level and the coordinators, by and large, the curriculum coordinators, with the exception of our SEL coordinator, are, well, let me clarify that. Fine Arts, Wellness, SEL, K-12, no department heads, they're coordinators K-12. And there's department heads at the secondary level in the middle school and the high school that are in charge of like the history, social studies, et cetera. But at K-6, we don't have any department heads or coordinate, and so the coordinators play a role there for the subject matters. So we have math, science, social studies, English. Yeah. Makes sense?
And those, those curriculum coordinators also do coordinated work so that you get the K-12 trajectory, where they can coordinate with department heads and cross-reference, provide collaborative PD, look at the transitional supports for third to fourth, sixth to seventh, and then eighth up to ninth, in the ways that they can all collaborate, just as you'll see some of the department heads do that overlap, you get that cross-grade level work that they can share. They do a lot of collaborative PD that is also K-12, and they're, you know, good colleagues around all of the work across district, looking to infuse, for example, the SEL work that we did or DEI work that we wanted to look at focus. They, they can go in and do that analysis, look at curriculum and provide supports to teachers.
Are department heads also in-class teachers? And are coordinators also in-class teachers?
Department heads are in, go ahead.
Department heads are in-class. They have one section less than other teachers, so they can do their administrative duties. And coordinators at the K-6 level are full-time. And just so you can picture that, we have over 100 elementary teachers that are being serviced by the coordinators, like, in the area of each of those, you know, subject matters. And so their, their coverage is across, in general, four buildings, 100 teachers, and department heads' coverage is more like 15 people in their department, 12 to 15 people in their department.
That's great. So just, I love this one, our faculty watch, Sheri Stevens has an update, just texted in. Sheri wants to clarify that actually, it was 618 students plus 34 new, bringing the IEP based students to 652 as of November 2021. Additionally, she said that the clinician being supported for four to six is for a CSS program at Mill Pond. So you have that Center for Student Success being layered in now at seventh and eighth, and they're looking to provide some of that same innovation for to six. So again, like, on-the-ground directors and people are working at this level to have those conversations, the requests come in, and then we come in and we do the more intense those conversations, the requests come in, and then we come in and we do the more intensive prioritizing, like our role is less fun. They got the innovation part. Now we get to have the concrete discussion and prioritization discussion. So Sherry, thank you very much. All right.
I was just gonna say, that makes more sense based on the budget requests that are additional, even maybe even low, because that 34 is pretty significant out of, you know, additionally to the 618.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna say too, that makes the clinician position, you know, I know it's at grade four to six, but it's not just a single, you know, person hired for, you know, just a few kids or something like that. That really makes a difference at the high school. So I could see how that would really make a difference in Mill Pond. So thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, no, yeah. And I think as we, if, if those positions kind of survive through to a tier where you want a deeper level of conversation, we would be bringing those forward just to focus our budget presentations. And then Tier Two and Tier Three will have the information at that, but we can provide more detail to you based upon questions. But that's the goal of this first kind of general pass. As you can see, these are the priorities that are surfacing. And you have time to ask questions like this, and then we know where you want us to put some area of detail to, to come back with more information. And if you look at preliminary O and M requests, typically, these are ones that would come forward and either be managed in budget as part of in-budget expenditures from in-house or become requests for increases to those, to that budget area. So that for us right now is exactly kind of, you know, like where we would typically look into some aspects of, for example, upgrading the pianos, can we do a portion of fundraising? Can we do something from the student services account or from the door and gate costs of the theater? So you always look into the budget for those pieces. And then you look at the actual differentials for where that cost would have to come or whether or not it would be a request to increase budget item. All right. We typically, one of the things I just want to give a shout out on is that, one of the things I think we've done well, it follows the work around the capital where we've created a more wide umbrella of the long-range projects that need to happen. The tennis courts, as an example, have a rotation now where like every number of years they need to be resurfaced. If anybody goes by the high school, you know that those courts are used constantly. And I think, you know, we have a rotation by which we've now started to rotate those projects in and out so we don't lose track on keeping the maintenance where it needs to be. All right.
Who knows? Andrew knows about tennis courts.
I think we just had too many dancers on the tennis courts and now, now we have to resurface them. We want those playable surfaces for our tennis players ready to go. So I think one other thing I want to highlight, just an interesting set of conversations and one of the pieces of values that we try to bring to the job for you is being on the ground a lot, Daniel and I and other leaders. And I think in terms of the classroom experience, we've talked about the fact that the differential in those sizes at elementary is really being felt in positive ways by both students and faculty. And so I happen to have a series of just comments made to me by teachers who said this is such a difference in the feel. And as they similarly said to me over the years, that the difference in the hiring numbers was a field that was less enjoyable in the sense that it just required so much more of their time. So I put this quote in here because it was from our first grade teacher at Hastings. And it just resonated with me that she really articulated it and that she could get to more groups, that she could do three groups in a reading rotation, which meant she was literally seeing kids more regularly, that she gets to students during the day, one-on-one to go through pieces of work and review that they need, and that she sees just a really a calmer and more meaningful experience for everyone. And I think it just really stood out to me. Also provided a link in there for you where the three principals then just kind of gathered some other quotes. I don't know, Daniel, if you could click on that for me. I don't know if I can from here. I think you have to open that, that's a link. So I just dropped it in for you because I think it has some highlights, areas for instruction where instead of having six guided groups in a class, you only have four. You can meet with three out of those four groups and really get to them. You get more direct targeted instruction time. I think they really feel that the core element of practice and building relationships with students is really so much better with the ratio. And they just feel that sense of being able to develop more meaningful relationships with students quickly. And that students get to know each other more because it just doesn't feel so big to them. So, you know, I think from that standpoint, they captured some information there for you. I think one of the interesting comments that was made to me, if you scroll down, Daniel, was the difference in what they could do at conferencing and just the difference in the impact between needing to conference with 15 families versus 22 families and that they were able to offer, they also have oftentimes two-family homes where you want to do different conferencing and different structures. And the difference in the impact there, you know, when you have, if you have guardians that need to have separate conferences, typically that's going to be three to five in a classroom if you just look at statistics. And, you know, it really extends the difference between 22 to 28 conferences versus 15 to 20 and being able to do those. And so, you know, I don't think of those things in the sense of on the ground, but when you're, when you're able to talk with faculty, they can, they really crystallized that for me and I wanted to share it with you. I also think that the communities within each classroom feel stronger this year, and if you scroll down just a little more, Daniel, because they have more opportunity to get to know each other. So I thought you would benefit from seeing that kind of on-the-ground comments from teachers. And, you know, I was walking around with Julia Degada and she and I were visiting classrooms and it was just kind of funny and we kind of like, you know, that's the third comment, we should write these down. So she said, oh, I will. So that, she prepared this and then shared it with the other two principals and let them contribute to kind of what they feel as well. So I just wanted to share that as a piece of kind of understanding the big picture of our work.
So I think when I see this, it's, it's helpful. I think it also brings up questions about class size for older grades because there's an, you know, equitable across the district and maybe they're building-based decisions. But I think that's, especially in the sort of recovery of COVID-impacted academics that we're starting to see in classrooms. I just think it sort of brings up, you know, if these are small class sizes, will middle school and high school?
Sure, no, I don't disagree. I mean, I think you, we're beginning to see the alleviation of sizing at Gibbons as their number, as that bubble moves through. And you're getting that relief and that we request maintaining that fifth grade position at Mill Pond to bring that number down. And you see Brian's request for additional FTE so that those class sizes can be scheduled and so you get less clusters. And as Daniel's very articulate about, some of the schedule gets driven at the high school based upon the blocks and how we run them. And we have so many students in Fine Arts or those specialty areas that it just makes the balance of classes hard to always pull off. But certainly we benefit from, you know, again, there's, can you solve that with more staffing typically? But again, there's, there's always space issues and schedule issues and all those pieces. But they certainly do represent it. I mean, he's got requests in there.
I do want to commend the teachers who are staying after for extra help these days to really try to bring students up to speed. It is really extraordinary, the dedication that our staff has that I'm seeing. And it's, I know they've been doing it all along, but because of COVID academic impact, it must be exasperated in some ways. And those teachers are really stepping up and I thank them and it's, yeah, it's good.
Thanks. Yeah, I think you'll see as well, I was looking with a principal today at one of the elementary schools and we were looking at the screening data from the QRT that they did, which was the emotional screener for stress points. And they had already categorized the data just so that they could start to provide small group intervention and support in Tier Two and Tier Three for students around that social emotional work in that strategy using that screener. So similarly, you have that screener taking place at high school so we can again, make sure we're not missing students. So all of that is to do exactly, that provides small group and up-close opportunities for our students to just be personalized and supported. So I like this slide. This is the backpacks from Senior Day. One of my favorite things is that one of the traditions of the seniors, they buy kindergarten backpacks. It's kind of a full circle experience. So I think they're the funniest thing.
Because I threw a bunch away or gave a bunch away and then I got asked to buy a Rebo backpack.
I just think it's so, it's so charming. It's one of my favorite things about the senior margin is walking, watching these giant young adults with these baby backpacks. It's just so fun. So what's next? Just want to highlight where we go from here. This is a path you know well. And we'll start meeting with WLT. I'm going over a little bit of this. David's going to link the budget after we go through it tonight so that they get a chance to look at it and we'll walk them through some of it tomorrow briefly and let them know that we'll start having some meetings with people who have requests in there. They'll develop it into tiers of one, two, and three. We'll meet with FinCom liaisons and open up conversation. And then at the same time, you know, David's continuing to finalize cost centers and look at the big picture of all of the accounts and the ways that we can pull that together into looking at where those, those numbers are going to sit. And then it moves towards our final recommendation to you and your time to think about it, push on it, revise it, and then vote it. So that's where we are now. You've asked some good questions as we've gone. Again, this is usually preliminary and the stages of just kind of wrapping your head around it. But if you have other questions, happy to talk about them now or just things you want us to, to start gathering, it's fine.
I have a question about where are we with the ESAR funds? Like what's still, you know, being carried on those? And I know we have a few years to spend them, but what, you know, what's the plan for, do we have any left or what's the plan for those?
So Daniel, we applied for it.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that's a, it's a good point in terms of as we move forward with the budget recommendations, we should talk about the ESAR funds and how, how the district would be using them moving forward. We basically had planned in the spring to keep three teaching positions and two tutor positions on as, as like basically class size reduction and, and academic support. So the tutors are in an academic support role. The three teachers are reducing the class sizes at various grade levels there on the ESAR. And we then have extra money beyond this year, I want to say, like close to like $200,000 if we, if we don't end up spending it for some reason, for any other contingency purposes or any other, you know, so we could look at that as a potential offset for next year.
I think, I think it'll, yeah.
That's the open question that, you know.
Yes.
But it's covering five positions this year.
And it could, so structurally, and Dave and I are talking about that a lot right now, the grants are both, you know, a benefit and a deficit in your budgeting because you, you defer that into your budget base, which can be really strategic and helpful or can cause problems when you come to the end of that time. I think we have to be really transparent about what's riding on there and what would remain and how it would strategically need to stage into budget, some this year, some next year. Like we need to really think that through, much like we saw with the fire department that was very transparent in the modeling. I think they did a great job where they said, okay, this grant is going to give us this, but then we need to add three, three, two. Like that they were very clear when that was going to come in and what their request model would be. And they were transparent that these were permanent additions. You see the police are currently looking at, I think, a grant as well. I think, I can't remember what it was, but they had a similar framework that they were looking to leverage. And I think we just need to be in conversation with this around everyone that when something is on that grant, what will happen with it? We know that path well. We've done that with the tuition revolving accounts in terms of what they can leverage for us, both, you know, problematically and in terms of overall budgeting and also very advantageous. So I think we'll, we'll have to keep looking at that.
So we are, so I mean, we are using it and it doesn't seem like there's an endless supply either. I mean, 200,000 left is enough to help, but it's not a miracle.
Yeah, and I do want to qualify that. Like I'm, the difference, you know, like I know that of those five positions, a couple of them might have gone on ESAR Two. And we have, so there's ESAR Three, which total ESAR Three is worth $600,000. So my numbers might be off. It might be, you know, it might be that we have more than 200,000, that we have three or 400. I have to like, I, you know, I wasn't factoring it in as we haven't caught up as part of the budget discussion for next year and figuring out what the bottom line moving forward would be.
Well, so we just asked them to put in and draw the money so that we have an opportunity. And once you draw the money, it exists and is available for you to then amend forward for three, two, two years after next year. So this year and two years further. So this year, next year, and then FY '24. So the decision was, right now, use it, pull it, get the money here.
Use a portion of the 600.
Right. So I anticipate, one, you'll see it as part of the budgeting discussion. And then Dave will do an overview on all those grants. You also have the American Recovery Funds, which are hanging out there as part of the discussion of capital, which also will heavily impact the trajectory of what happens with capital. So we have two major projects riding on that discussion. And then we're presenting on Monday our other project. So, you know, it's, it's just the complexities of that are complicated, but exciting and advantageous. But certainly, we need to be careful that they don't create other impacts two years down the road.
I would like to go on the record as wanting that to transition. When you said offset for the next year, as they come off the grants, I'm in favor of that gradual off-the-grant space so that at the end, it's not as much of an impact?
Yeah.
I just think that's the responsible thing to do because it, it's not like you don't need the five positions. You need the five positions. And so you're going to probably need the five positions next year and to maintain that level of service.
Yeah, I agree. We layered in additional tutor support. I think we layered two additional tutors at Gibbons. And I know recently there was some discussion about, you know, just making sure that we have additional support at every school. We added the Center for Student Success there and then two tutors that were able to provide supplemental instructional math and language support. So, you know, Jack forecasted wanting to provide small group instruction for kids to get a secondary review on, on both math and language skills as needed. So those are at play as well. And the question is, do we roll one of those into budget next year and do we maintain one and then the next year roll in the other? Or do they go away at a certain point, you know, based upon a recovery of performance? So all of that will need to be figured out as we work it forward.
You're correct. The fire department did do that.
Yes, they did.
They had a grant and they told us it was coming and they told us it would go into their budget.
Yeah.
And it did. And he warned us.
Yeah. And we, I mean, the town ultimately voted, the town ultimately voted for that grant knowing that that was.
That was going to happen.
Yeah, you balance the needs versus the cost and when it's going to come in, so.
I think one of the things that is interesting in this discussion is we're talking about all the parts. But at this point, we don't know what the impact of all the parts are. And granted, you know, the process that we've used historically means that, you know, we'll see everybody's request and obviously we're not going to fund them all. Although I suppose it's possible that, that given the need, we may have to. But the other side of the coin is I think that the school committee has to be cognizant of the ability of the town to pay. And, you know, we haven't heard and won't hear here, I guess, until we get into the overall town budget discussions in December, is what is the town's ability to pay? We talked about ARPA. We talked about some other grant systems. I think the whole funding of the town is quite confused based on the monies that came in and went out relative to COVID. But, you know, I'm sort of skeptical that we can continue year over year to add staff to quote unquote, improve our, our ability to deliver learning without understanding what the impact of that is on the town's budget. And so we see 57 million budget authorized by the town. And so far, at least in this list of things, I'm sort of looking at another 800K on top of the budget plus whatever the salary increase is on a stepwise function. And so again, you know, I'm aware that all these things add up and there will be an impact. And so although we're quiet here as a member of the school committee, I think that all of us are seeing sort of in the, in the fog that eventually we're going to have to come that eventually we're going to have to come to grasp as to what it is we're going to ask the town to vote. And, and I think clearly, to the extent that the, the students benefit by any increase that the town would vote, I think we have to prove that. We have to show that that is what they get. And without that, we're just adding people to the payroll for which we get nice things. But can we do without those nice things? And so that's the perspective I have, at least at this point in our budget discussion. And as your schedule shows, we will come to that point pretty quickly.
Yes, we will. We try to get there. You never like this budget presentation. Because you want the number and I totally agree with you and you need to know what the impact overall is. So I think this is the most frustrating budget presentation we make to you of the set because we, we give ourselves time and process to be crunching numbers by showing you pieces of it. But it's also a lot to take in if we show it to everybody all at once. So I totally agree. And I also want to acknowledge and recognize that it's, it's a process by which, I don't anticipate we would fund all of those positions as well. And I think, but it's important for you as, as a committee to hear the voice of on the ground, you know, what they think about and what they think they need and what they do need. And we then try to sort all of that out and bring it before you. But at times you've wanted certain things that we would have deferred on. And so in respect to shared process leading to a final recommendation, we've opted over the years to show you everything. The number is always unsettling, but I think the trajectory, the trajectory of what, you know, good budgeting shows things for a couple of years before they show up. So, you know, you've seen some positions multiple times before they would come into the fold and we see if they dissipate or they rise to the surface again. So those are kind of the process that I think is healthy. And we certainly like to get to the numbers as soon as possible. So, thank you.
Do we have any better forecasts, I guess, for what growth we may see from this year to next in terms of students?
I mean, it's hard to say. I think that, I imagine that we'll continue, we're still enrolling. Like again, we had very strong enrollment over the, the summer, but we also have students who rotate out. Remember you always have like the graduating class goes out and you have your kindergarten class come in and your new, real new is the offset there. And there's always some, for the last couple of years, it was really a big increase. Now it's, it's kind of a stable trade and this year was a little bit of dip, but then we're picking up other students. I think we'll probably be close to 4,000 by the end of the year. I think we'll see a steady. I'm hoping we level out around 4,000. I mean, somewhat, it's somewhat. You've got the 26 houses that are going to come in over the next, I think, three years over at Mount Pleasant area. We certainly have a robust set of apartment housing available and it, and it makes for a continual rotation of new students as well as housing. So I think we're seeing like Wayside is rolling over, which I think is really interesting. Wayside was stable for years and people purchased and just raised their kids all the way through. And now you're seeing that, that area of town kind of rotating. So it's hard to predict sometimes. I, I'm anxious to think about if it doesn't stabilize, we would do another enrollment study to get another look at it because it's been an anchor for us to have those numbers to guide us. But the original report said we should stabilize around 4,200 at full growth. I don't think we'll be quite that big, but it's not far off from what they gave us seven years ago, actually. So.
Yeah. And as long as the zoning stays about the way it is, probably the only real growth will be, you know, as neighborhoods age out and those people sell their houses, move out and new residents show up.
Right.
With, with kids, then, then that's the cycle.
Right. Because those.
There's going to be bumps as we, as that happens.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the things that's pretty obvious right now is that there is a tremendous constraint on, on real new construction anywhere in town. And it's really the rollover that, that we're going to see in the near future.
Yeah. And I think the part that's hard to predict is, you know, the robust apartment-based quality of lifestyle that we share in Westboro in terms of families. So that can be a little bit more hard to predict. But yeah, I would agree with you. I think, I think we're in a good place, but it'll be, continue to watch it. We don't have our back to the wall, which we did several years ago in terms of just the press of how many kids we were getting and how hard it was to move quickly. So hopefully we're on the downward curve of that and leveling out at kind of a district that hovers around 4,100. So that's where we are. I find the conversation helpful and I think what we'll do is you can continue to look at the data, ponder it, send Dave and I questions, make sure you CC both of us so we can start to think about what kind of questions you have. And that helps us. And then we'll set up a meeting with FinCom to meet with our liaisons and start that conversation and we'll be off and running. Okay?
Thank you. Okay. So next on our agenda is a discussion of communication practices. And this is on our agenda for us just to take a few minutes to think about our practices as a school committee and just kind of take a minute to think about how we receive and respond to communication from residents and from citizens and from parents. And I do think that as a board, we do a pretty good job overall in managing communications and connecting with families and students and community members who email us. But there's always room for improvement. And Andrea helped me pull together this information that I shared with all of you on how other boards in Westboro work with their correspondents and how they deal with emails and how they report out about correspondence. So that I just thought that would be helpful for us to have as a, as a starting point. Interestingly enough, I started digging through the policies and at the, I think at the end of this document, Andrea had put what our policies are, which there are not a lot of detail. It emphasizes that we'll work together, that we are like, when you're speaking as a member of the school committee, you can, you're representing the school committee. There are other times when you can speak as an individual. Like I could speak as a parent of a high school student. But there's really no detail in there about exactly how to manage emails. And I think we've sort of organically kind of figured that out, but I thought it would be good for us to take a minute to think about it. Lisa, I didn't know if you had something to add just because this kind of came out of a discussion that we had. So.
You know, having been on the school committee for over four and a half years, I've always picked and chosen when to reply as an individual on emails. And either because an email spoke to me or it felt like an individualized email, that I often respond more to an email that isn't cut and pasted and then repeated by several. I am more apt to individually respond, recognizing that the chair is probably going to respond only because of past practice. And I could see how that can sometimes conflict. I have my own personal view about something and I respond when the chair might be representing the committee as a whole. So I think that's why it came up. It also came up because COVID response to citizens' ability to be present in our meetings, whether it was on Zoom or in person, changed the protocol for communication. And so that is another reason I think it came up is that could someone come into this room for citizens' request? It seems like a safe environment considering typically nobody is here. And I don't mean that to say, I'm saying everyone, that people are welcome and it feels like a safe environment. So that's, I think, why, you know. And, you know, for me personally, I'll just give my opinion while I'm talking, is that I like to be able to respond individually. And why? Because then it connects me with parents who are reaching out to give their opinion and me to be able to respond and say, I hear you or I hear you and I think this. But I do think we should change our response to the COVID piece personally. That's just my opinion that I think if you're going to be speaking to citizens' requests, you should come and join us here and being part of the process that we had prior to COVID.
I think that's true in the sense that, you know, to the extent that a person wishes their comments to be heard by the public, which is what we've experienced in the last two meetings. I think the other side of the coin is that there should be the opportunity to ask questions and to, and to get follow-up responses because that's the nature of why we have public meetings. And the second piece of it is I agree with Lisa that in fact, we are elected officials of the town. We are responsible to anybody who asks us a question about what is our opinion. And to that extent, then we all have an obligation to respond as an individual representing a constituent, constituency of, of the town. So, you know, I was going to ask what the, what the, what generated this request to find out how other boards and committees respond to questions that come from the public. For example, the planning board is voted, so they are in the same position we are. To the extent that the finance committee might be asked the question, then they are appointed. So, you know, the structure of each committee has to do with how it would respond to a public request. But it is important, I think, that each one of us has a responsibility to answer a question as we see it to provide our opinion. That's why, that's why there's five of us or in the case of the finance committee, nine. So that, to the extent that, that there's an issue of who should respond, each and every one of us should respond if the question is directed to us personally. On the other hand, I don't respond very often to the general information that, that we see as members of the school committee because I know that Kristin generally will respond. You know, and, and having been associated with us all for so long that I have confidence that, that her response generally would be representative of what we think. And to the extent it may not be, then we would react accordingly. But each one of us has to answer for our own, I guess, actions here on the committee or, or in private as well. So there's no place to hide if you're a public official. I think we know that. And so if we make a mistake, someone's going to tell us and we'll react to that. So like, like I said, it, it's an interesting thing and society is quite a bit different as a result of, of the fact that we're on television, that we hold Zoom, have held Zoom meetings for a very long time. And in a lot of ways, we're isolated from those who have concerns about what we do. Probably the only time that we really have to stand our ground is when we make a presentation to town meeting, whether it be budgets or whether it be for capital expenditures. But the times there are changing. I think we all can see that as a result of things that happened two years ago, COVID and the results of it and the concern and, and fears, I think, of parents relative to their kids in the school system. And we all sit here in, in a position to make decisions for the community and particularly for, for kids in the school system, for which we all are responsible for individual opinions and our actions when it comes time to vote. And we know that that conundrum is what is right to do for everybody or for the few or for the majority. I mean, those are all points of view that are going to have to be discussed when we get there. I think we're sort of under the mantle of DESI right now in terms of what we will do with masking and until that opportunity comes forward. Some thoughts?
Thank you.
I completely agree with Steve. We, we are five-member committee with diverse opinions. We may not necessarily agree with each other. So leading our messages through the chair is not really, you know, my opinion. It will dilute that diversity of opinions. We should be able to say what as both as committee members. And sometimes I feel as a committee member, my higher hands are tied to speak as a parent, you know.
Well, you're supposed to. You are a parent.
Yeah, I'm a parent too. So, so there's, there's that, that balancing act that I always have to think twice before, you know, I put my, whether I'm wearing a parent hat or a committee member hat. You know, that's, that's the balance that I always play with. But at the same time, as a committee member, each one of us should be able to say what we feel and where we stand so that the committee, the community knows where we stand on anything. So we should be able to put out our messages.
Well, you are, you are. The only thing I would suggest is to the extent that you take a position, that you should say, it's my position.
Yeah, exactly.
And I represent whoever's opinion out there in regards to that position.
Yeah. You have to be really clear whether, you can't be speaking for the whole committee.
The whole committee.
Unless we voted on something, then you can say, this is a policy because it's been voted in. It's a policy of the school committee. But if you want to offer your opinion, you can just clearly state, I'm just, as an individual school committee member, I think Lisa likes to say, as an individual school committee member.
Or as a citizen.
As a citizen, yeah.
As a parent.
As a parent, yeah.
I just think too, sometimes there's different types of emails that come through. Something like, sometimes we get emails for a certain, you know, vote that might be coming up or, you know, calls that might be out there and, you know, maybe the chair replies to those as just a more like message of that vote's coming up, thanks for your input, that kind of thing, which we could do is also. And then some of them, people that you know or something, sometimes something feels more personal where you'd want to pick up the phone and call the person as opposed to, you know, sending the email back. So I think the tone of the email, and sometimes it's just a straight question that I would defer to the chair because they talk to Amber, Daniel more, they would, they would actually know the answer to instead of bothering someone to get the answer to a question that Kristin could probably answer. So that's kind of how I read the, read the emails that come in, kind of, is this more appropriate for the chair to answer? Should I pick up the phone and call this person or are we going to get 15 of these emails that all look similar?
Right. And sometimes I'll look to see if the email is sent to all of us or is it sent to just the chair or just the superintendent, you know, sometimes. And, you know, oftentimes if it is sent to all of us, as chair, I respond just by saying, thank you. I want to acknowledge that we received your email. We appreciate you reaching out. You know, I'm not in a, I feel like I'm responding for all of us, so I wouldn't give my opinion. I just say thank you. And if I have follow-up questions, I'll ask them to send more information or would you open to a phone call or something? But sometimes it is as simple as, thank you, you know, and then I know you've all seen it. And, you know, then it's like a point of reference for whatever we're working on or, or talking about. So, I mean, I have the trust in everyone here to respond appropriately and to represent yourself appropriately and as an individual when, when that's needed. You're all experienced board members at this point. But I do want to talk about the unique requests that we've had the past couple weeks, which are past couple meetings, which is something that I had, we had at the bottom of the agenda because we were transitioning from Zoom meetings into in-person meetings. And some people felt that we were having in-person meetings too quickly, that it wasn't feeling safe enough. And so to honor that, this is before vaccines, I wanted to honor that by saying, if you feel uncomfortable coming to an in-person meeting, then, you know, I'd be happy to, you know, read a statement. But we've since removed that from the bottom of the agenda. And I would just like to recommend that if you have something to say, you either submit it in writing and it'll be submitted in writing to the school committee or you can come and give the presentation or give the citizens speak directly to us here in this room. This is a huge room. And if your citizens' request is really only limited to three minutes, then you really would only have to wear your mask for just a few minutes while you're in here doing that if you're not vaccinated.
I guess I'll comment that the three-minute, minute timing for public speaking from the floor has been part of the procedures of the school committee for, well, at least as long as I've been on the school committee. We're getting up there in years. So it's almost 20 years that I know it's been policy of the school committee. And I think that's fair because there have been times where without that, the school committee could not have done it. committee could not have done its business in a given meeting.
And, right, this is our business meeting. We don't have a chance to sit and talk, all of us together, except when we're in this open, public forum, sitting here at this table. So, we do have a lot of business to do, and we do welcome citizens. And that's why I think, you know, there is a lot of email that goes back and forth between parents and us, and I feel like that's a way for them to get a quick answer, or just be like, "I want to know, I want to make sure you know this. I want to make sure that you know this is happening." And that is really helpful to us. So, I do find that an effective means of communicating to us as well. And so, just one other thing I wanted to bring up, and Lisa, you and I had talked about this too. So, some other boards share about the correspondence that they get in their meetings. And I do know some other school committees have an agenda item that says, like, issues and correspondence. And what they're doing is just sharing out to other school committee members, but also the public, you know, "I've gotten three emails about this," or, "A citizen came to me with this concern," just to have it on public record and just to share that information. I don't know if that's ever been a part of what we've done.
First of all, to do that here, it would take forever. One of the things you might think about is putting it on the school website as documents we've received as a school committee, so that the public can see it if they wish. You know, the fact is, each one of us spends much more than the few hours that we spend here at a public meeting during the week dealing with issues that belong to the school system. In my case, based on project construction and other stuff, I probably spend upwards of 15 hours a week, and have for years, doing that business. So, you know, I tend to be, want our public meetings to be efficient, to stick to the agenda that we create, to request that those that do come before us, that they spend time in the case of the three minutes to hone their presentation, to fit the three minutes and get their points across. Most of the time, if you just come up with a bullet point and you read those points, "This is what I'm concerned about," you get where you need to go in three minutes. Spending more time to provide information to the school committee, which we're probably more than likely to have had at least 100 times in different ways, different points of view in regards to the issues of the times, if you will. So, for me, an efficient meeting is the best way to serve the public and to get our job done. So, anyway, you know, those are my ramblings, I guess, of this particular issue. But I do think it is well-known that we, as elected officials, have a right to respond with our own opinion as long as we make it that case. And that the only response that represents the committee as a whole are those votes that we take. Therefore, information that comes to us as a committee will only be acted on by the committee when the time comes to do so. That isn't going to be for some time yet, I think, in regards to COVID masks and the whole story. Because, superimposed on top of this, of our actions, are the obligations of the CDC, are the requirements of DESI, and for that matter, the local Board of Health. And they all play into our decision-making in terms of what we do. But I think for sure that every member of the school committee will vote their conscience in terms of what's best for the majority of students in the school system when the time comes.
And, go ahead.
Do we need something?
No, this was just sort of a first pass for us to discuss and raise, you know, some of the concerns or issues, and just see if there's, you know, any process or protocol that we would want to adopt or change, or, you know, anything there. So this gives me a good sense of, you know, what we're thinking. And I just want to be clear that any post or comment or tag on social media is not a communication to the school committee. So if you ask a question on Facebook and put my name up there as a tag, I may or may not respond to you, but that is not an official communication to me as a chair of the school committee. We accept phone calls and emails, and you're certainly welcome to come to a meeting, and if you, or to have a face-to-face meeting outside of this meeting. But social media is not an effective way to communicate with the school committee. That was very helpful, thank you. And so, you can also think between now and our next meeting, if you do have suggestions or something that you feel like we should tighten up, we can go ahead and do that too. What I found interesting when Andrea was doing her research, that we're the only ones that have our individual email addresses available to the public. For other boards, it's like a general, you know, we have like our school dash committee, it's general, and it really goes to all of the board members, plus their, like, assistants that help pull together a lot of that communication. So, I'm honored that people take the time to write to us. I'm honored that my, you know, my email's open and out there and available 24/7 for anyone who has a concern. So I appreciate people taking advantage of that as well.
So what is our policy when it comes to citizens' requests? I just want to make sure we're clear on what it is at this time?
Yeah, so our policy for citizens' requests is going to be what it's always been, which you can come in person or send something in writing, but your writing will not be read aloud. If you write us something, any email sent to a school committee member is public record. So if you want something entered into the public record or attached as the minutes, I guess you could tell us that you want that. But otherwise, you'll have to come to a meeting to share your statements.
Yeah, I think that's best, like I said earlier, to the extent that it is not a one-way discussion, that delivered here on television, real-time, allows the school committee to ask questions of the presenter. Without that, it's a one-way story, and in fact, I think it usurps the public need to have an opportunity to comment. So, anyway, that's my feeling about it, so I would agree with what you're suggesting.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to move to our, actually, it's our last agenda item, because we're going to pass over the Assabett-Baly Collaborative Quarterly Update. So I'll turn it over to our superintendent for COVID protocol discussion.
Thank you. I think Daniel's going to open up the draft timeline and planning steps that I provided when I visited the Board of Health last week. It was a very productive collaborative conversation, where they asked good questions, reflected themselves, provided guidance to areas where they thought we could refine our thinking, as well as provided each board member's individual thinking about our move forward to develop flexible masking in our future. So I wanted to bring that forward, and I would say, Daniel, if you just want to roll that down, I guess, I did share, I would say first, like, in that discussion, captured that our current vaccination update, they asked for information on just high school and Gibbons, because those are the current ones where we have received DESC's permission to move to flexible masking. You can see that there are three, and three unvaccinated faculty at each of those buildings. It's an incredibly strong piece of informational data around the strength of our vaccination. I think we see people, many already heading to get their boosters. Our student vaccination rate was submitted from SNAP, which is then verified through physician and those that administered the shots, so it's a strong valid number. So we used that on our submission. And one of the things we discussed at the Board of Health, and then again today when we met at the Labor Board, was that we will get 100% of information on all students regarding vaccination. I wanted to, and I was transparent about that in any other communications, I think it's an important part of process, parallels the first steps that Hopkinton took as well, but that I wanted to wait until we had a good conversation at Labor Board today and had gone to the Board of Health. And then, end of this week, we'll push out a notification to students between that 85% to the 100%. So, the building-based nursing staff and head nurse at Gibbons and the high school are currently looking at the data of what's in SNAP, which is their database of reports from medical information. It's HIPAA-protected in the sense that they are the only ones that look at that. They will basically develop a student list of those that will be needing to get information on their vaccination. It might be that they got vaccinated somewhere that didn't submit it, because a lot of the, not all of the CVS or different places, and Walgreens pushed that in. So we definitely want confirmation on all of that. And so, the nurse, the head nurse will take responsibility to send a confirmation email with an attached Google link to every family who, we don't know the status of their student, and they would be able to give us information. That will allow us to know where we are with exactly students that are vaccinated, as just like we have with faculty, 100% information. All new faculty onboarded are answering those questions, and so are then new students that come in. So we keep it as a fresh data cycle. So we discussed the importance of that as a benchmark for having a procedure to make sure that we're aware of the masking requirements for any unvaccinated individuals. And we had a nice discussion today at Labor Board around kind of a set of practices that we can leverage to make sure that we monitor masking while respecting HIPAA guidelines of not sharing lists and working privately with students. I imagine that will be a very, very tight group of nurse, head nurse, and, you know, the core administrator of like the building, like the principal. So that would be part of a procedure, so. So if you skim down, I just want to look at a report of cases. Our case rate has also been incredibly good. If you go back up for just a second, Daniel, I know that, for example, at the high school, there have been four cases this year. They had two more today between two siblings in a family, I think, a ninth grader and then another student. So, again, like, that would put us at six for the year thus far, and one at Gibbons. So, again, you see that data is pretty strong for us. So if you just skim down, I wanted to provide an update around a couple key pieces. You can go past dates for now. One of the things we want to reiterate is that we'll continue to work with all those groups. And if you skim down further, you'll see here, we started with some of the very first parameters of what would be the expectations. This is an active developing draft that we will then take and refine through meeting with. We had a really good discussion with our Labor Board today, and they basically, we worked to surface all of the areas of question around procedure and practices that they want us to review and articulate a process on. And I think that was a successful conversation. We have a range of areas that they really wanted to push on us about effectively to represent a range of voices. It was, again, the same quality of conversation that allowed us to move forward during the height of the pandemic by just answering questions, staying in relationship, coming up with shared practices, and working hard to listen and be responsive, and to use data to guide our decision-making. If you look at some of the early emerging development of expectations, these are the ones I shared at the Board of Health as examples of the types of general procedures we would be using, that all students will have a mask available at all times, as will faculty, and that faculty and staff need to, I mean, faculty and students need to anticipate that across the span of the year, that we would see flexible masking happening in certain classrooms, that you might see a whole building return to masking for a short procedure. You need to know that we would be looking at data continually, and that flex masking means flex masking. It doesn't mean you're going to shed your mask and never put it on again the rest of the year. What it means is that we would be looking at a series of practices that would give us a sense of safety protocol and guidelines for the range of differing students and faculty we have in our building, and then respectfully coming up with a set of protocols. We'd be looking at clear guidance that unvaccinated individuals must remain masked per DESC as of now. And that won't change regardless of our move to flexible masking. Those individuals need to mask. It's not a recommendation, it's a requirement. Recommendation in public, requirement on transportation, schools, and hospitals is still in place. We followed those DESC guidelines, and that's a requirement. Students will continue to wear them on the bus.
Can I interrupt?
Yep.
Just for my understanding, flex masking, if there's a kid in the class where some condition, health condition, that he may be at danger of being exposed, so the rest of the kids will be required to...
Yep, that's a great question. So it was one of the nice range of conversation we surfaced today. The same might be true of a faculty member. Or there might be a whole range of things, like a faculty member or family member who lives with a fragile individual. Like, we had a set of very clear medical and targeted guidelines that we used before, responsive to providing interventions for faculty and students based upon medical needs and a set of criteria. So today, we surfaced a discussion that said we would follow that same type of initial discussion, that we would then lay out some procedures that are respectful to recognizing the need for that. But for example, of your decision, or your example, you might, I imagine, in this protocol, Andrew, through his day, would move into some classrooms where it would be completely flex masking, and he might have on his schedule a marker, or there might be a sign on the door that this class is a masking class. And that's a private guideline. It might be for a student, it might be for a faculty member. But we would have throughout the day a range of experiences that would be based on the private, well-rounded, and appropriate decision-making that we used before. So, the goal is to just step that through with Safety Committee, with Labor Board, and with you, and with all the collaborative groups, to say, "This is a healthy set of respectful practices that provide a sense of safety and a real sense of safety to people that require it." So that was the kind of range of quality of discussion we started today. I think the other thing we're clear about is we, and this is something I feel really good about, respect to anyone's decision to mask or flex mask regardless. You know, a culture of acceptance and respect would need to ground all of this. I have a high level of value that our students and faculty can implement that in these schools. So, if you look at the special circumstances, we started to kind of map out some of that, which would be, you know, until you make, until you take an approval vote for any move on changing your masking protocol, all practices remain as they stand. I think the earliest you could, or should consider that would be the 17th, based upon the opportunity for us to continue thoughtful conversation with the different groups that need time to respond to feeling heard and asking good questions, and also to give us time to lay out a couple more protocols that I feel have to be done for us to be in a good place to, for me to make a recommendation that I would in any way see us as moving forward to flexible masking. I thought that the Board of Health did a nice job to, you know, we were clear at the Board of Health that we would keep the benchmark weekly meetings with them to look at our data, and at any given time, if they felt there was a change in our numbers that merited a request that we mask, we would work together with them to respond. Could be a class or a building, as we used before. So, I just want to mirror to you where we are in the stage of respectful conversation. I think there are protocols that need to be finalized, not, they need to take as long as they need or as short as they need, in order to put a set of practices in place so that both families with students that might have questions and faculty feel like they've gotten a respectful answer to their question and a visual of our practices, such that when we move forward, we're demonstrating the same thing that brought us this far safely. And that was the tone of the discussion today. You know, Labor Board was an anchor for us moving forward, to give us feedback. And I thought today's meeting, I mean, Daniel and Lisa would probably comment if you want around the tone and feeling being collaborative. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And that really was the tone of the anchor, which is recognizing that the district will take steps forward to go to flex masking. We've been transparent about that. But the question is just figure out the timing of when. And I'm showing you the things I feel as your superintendent need to be answered before, I would say, you know, I could come forward with a document that has had a lot of eyes on it, that can say, "Yep, this feels like we could, you know, amend your policy." Lisa, if you want to add comments?
Yeah, you know, I want, first, absolutely, that the collaboration with the Labor Board members is strong, and I want you to know as a representative of the school committee in those meetings, that I would hope that you would respect some of the things... that I would hope that you would respect some of the things that we come out of that meeting so that as we move forward, it's a very thoughtful, methodical process. And I really did hear from those members who are representing our staff and faculty that we're talking about the validity of the data, the validity of a vaccination rate to make sure we know what we, what we truly have, that those with medical, everything from students and staff with medical issues that require a fully masked class, that we go through that protocol very carefully through HR and through our medical staff so that everyone feels that, you know, will every single piece always fit together? There was a range of feelings about that and beliefs and we're going to have to just move through it very carefully and also recognizing that we have our own constituency of parents who feel one way or another. And it's, I want those parents to know that I hear them also and we are getting a range of beliefs and that as we move, for some way too slowly and for some way too quickly, that it is a thoughtful process that I feel very comfortable with. And I thought that the Labor Board was very patient with us considering how their own constituency feels because they did do their own research on their own staff, I mean, our staff and our faculty to get a sense of where people are at. Yeah.
Daniel, any thoughts you want to add?
I think you both articulated it well and I appreciate, you know, how well Lisa was listening, you know? And there was, it was a, you know, it was, it was a good meeting. It was very, everybody was forthright about where they stood and there was definitely some, you know, that the faculty is nervous and that was conveyed and, you know, we need to be cautious in how we, you know, they are, they are the ones with a couple of thousand, you know, 1,200 kids in a building in close proximity to them, so.
I thought, thank you. I think it's important to just capture the range of snapshots. I think, I want to reiterate that their perspective is it's not if, it's when. And I think they recognize that we are going to continue to take steps forward. They know that we'll put out the survey to students asking for the gap in the vaccination data. I said that we were going to develop a joint letter from Labor Board that shared an update, which again was effective for us both, you know, in the long-range relationship, we've used that during negotiation during last year with COVID, like, so we'll continue that. We'll put together a joint negotiation, kind of not negotiation, but a joint message that goes out to faculty and staff, just providing updates to them on the range of discussion. I'll take a stab at drafting that and send it to that Labor Board group for review and then that'll push out probably the end of the week. And lastly...
Can I add one comment?
Yep.
For all of us committee members who are going to vote on this, we need to remember that my comment is we need to remember that masking is not only to protect themselves but to protect others. So in the school, we are in a group of, you know, in a school setting, we are all together. So masking is required not just to protect themselves but to protect the others who are in the vicinity.
Exactly, exactly. And I think that that was the tone of the discussion, recognizing that as we look at wanting to understand the range of, you know, privately, the practice we used when we were making decisions about how faculty or students would be supported a year ago, we had a private and appropriate process for discussions through HR. And I think activating that cycle to return to those people who had that range of considerations to check on where they are now was kind of some of the natural type of next steps. But I appreciate that comment as well. The last piece is that we'll start, we'll meet with the Safety Committee in the next week to kind of do the same range. I want to take some of the notes from what we did today to kind of add to this document and then I'll bring it to them and let them respond. And then lastly, I just wanted to clarify one piece. We will continue, I think, somebody had emailed me just asking for clarification. So, you know, we focused on COVID-based communications coming out through the FAQ because it streamlined and consolidated everybody getting to hear the same thing around something that was kind of stressful. So that we will continue. But I want to be clear, like, people can email us around other issues as they need to. We've always received a range of email. I don't believe that all correspondence is supposed to go through like the superintendent's advisory. It's an effective way to share communication, but it's not like, I don't expect to ever get emails. But when we were getting 100 emails during COVID around my thought this way, that way, it was just better to consolidate them and rescued us into a much better process that made people feel like they were hearing the information they needed. So around the COVID-based discussion, as we move forward towards ending decision on a change in masking, we will maintain the FAQ and that design as being the best place to share your thoughts on our steps. And we will probably put out an FAQ probably early next week. And then anything else, you've always emailed us, like you've said, both school committee and administration and myself, as needed, please feel free, that's fine. And I think that's it for tonight in terms of where we are. We are taking steps forward. We will not drag our feet, but we want to answer questions thoughtfully. So I don't open it up for any discussion.
Yeah, I have some comments. Sorry, I'm always better when I think my thoughts ahead of time and read them, so I apologize for reading them, but I'm more coherent that way, I feel like. So as always, I appreciate and thank Amber and the Board of Health for their discussion and their expertise. In fact, I actually would be really ready to vote tonight on the policy, but I heard their caution and their thoughtfulness and now the input from the Labor Board. So thank you for bringing that, bringing that here. But in my opinion, I think we're at a place where individuals and families are aware of their own risk tolerance and are making decisions for themselves. Kind of like Lisa said, you know, last week or two weeks ago about, you know, the norms when you leave the house, I feel like people are at that place with their risk tolerance. And so I think pretty soon we would be extending our control beyond what might be necessary by keeping the current mask policy in place. And we have the numbers and we know the percentages and we're going to find out more information about that and make sure our numbers are tight about the vaccines. I'm confident, as Amber said, that the students will respect everyone's choices and will mask if necessary and as asked in classrooms and situations. I have no, no concerns about our students about that. I'm aware of the risks of the flexible masking, but I believe we still have the measures in place, like we have our tight contact tracing and the testing in the schools to try to curb any potential spread. And just to reiterate a point, I think Dr. Ehrlich made at the Board of Health meeting, which is so important, is we ought to stay home if we're sick, especially in the winter months coming. That's another layer of protection for our community. And I know it's disruptive and inconvenient and you miss out on things, but that's what happened before COVID when you were sick and that's what's going to happen now when you get sick. So I think that's a super important layer that we can all remember. I have respect for the thoughtful processes and those that do the work. So if we need another two weeks or so to get the right data and the right procedures in place, I'm fine with that. One part of the proposed plan that I still would question though is wearing masks after the Thanksgiving break. I feel like if we go ahead and vote and make the decision that after the break, I don't personally, in my opinion, see much difference between a regular weekend where people are gathering with their families and friends or an extended weekend over Thanksgiving where people are traveling and gathering with family and friends and they're probably traveling this weekend too. So that would just be one place where I don't know if we can bring that back around to the Safety Committee or some of the discussions. That would be a question I would have for...
Thanks. Other thoughts, reflections?
I would just say that, you know, I echo some of what Sarah had said, like, I too wanted to vote on this tonight. And I definitely respect that there are so many people who have a valid fear of taking off their mask in our crowded schools. So it's, and like you said, it's going to happen. So if it takes a couple of weeks to get people used to that and get really these protocols in place, I think we can do that. But I also think, you know, if we waited, you know, if we wait till our next meeting, that gives us a few days before Thanksgiving and then with masks off and then they come back after Thanksgiving and have to put their mask on. I think that we need to try this for a few weeks, collect the data, see where we're at. If we don't try, there's no good time to try this. Like, we wait till January, we wait till after break, we wait till after, like, I think it just has to happen. So that's my thought on that.
I think, again, as you've had your discussion around communication tonight, that's why a board is an important process to serving the public. Your diverse voices are important. I, I think that we carry forward thoughts on what makes the most sense for our district across a range of valued constituencies, our parents, our students, our community and our faculty. And we have not played them off against each other. And I think it's important when we really use the word community and relationship that we live that value, which means each of those voices has to have respected balance. So the faculty isn't going to weigh the whole voice on this, students aren't going to weigh the whole voice on this, parents aren't going to weigh a whole voice on this. Data will guide us, benchmarks will give us guidance that helped us before and you guys together as a board, when you vote, will be listening to all of those groups with respect. And that's what I appreciate about your conversation tonight. You know, you've come in with a voice of some parents and students that you, and thoughts that represent constituencies that say we should be moving forward. And then you have Daniel and I and Lisa who are listening to aspects of, you know, faculty who want us to reflect on certain pieces and even they are in a range. So we are moving forward and we left the meeting saying it's not, it's not if, it's when and that they understand that we are moving forward thoughtfully and they respected the conversation. So I think that's where we are. I think we should just, again, let the process guide us and I can promise you that, you know, we don't want to be spending more time than we need to, we need enough time to do it well.
You know, where we are today versus where we were a year ago is totally different, totally different in the sense that there is an opportunity for anybody now, given even five years old and older, to do their best to protect themselves from this virus. And it's a personal choice as to whether individuals get a vaccination or not. But the point being is that apparently history now says that with the vaccine and people who are vaccinated, if they do get the bug, their, let's say, course of suffering is minor. At least that seems to be the history. Whereas those that don't get the vaccination might very well contract the disease and die. And so from the logical point of view of the sequence of events as, as they now seem to have developed, I think there's a logical sequence by which you can evaluate as an individual, you know, what part of society should bear the responsibility for the risk. At this point in time with a very high vaccination rate, for those people who have been vaccinated, I think the risk is relatively low and that even for children now five and older have an opportunity to be vaccinated and to basically receive the same benefits. So from that point of view, in terms of what we do as individuals, in terms of what a decision might be, whether you mask or you don't mask, in my own opinion, I'm going to weigh the logic of who suffers and who doesn't. Because I think individuals who have issues have a right to wear a mask and to protect themselves as best they can, particularly if they're not able to be vaccinated for one reason or another. But that seems to be the only protection for those who choose not to be vaccinated. And so it's their choice as to whether they wear a mask or not. In our case, if they're not vaccinated, we will require in the school system that they wear a mask, mainly because that is a mandate from, from the state. But going forward, those who choose to be vaccinated and to get the benefit of that vaccine are not likely to suffer much based on what we are aware of now. And I think that has to weigh in the, in the way we as a member of the school committee think. Because we're not voting for ourselves particularly, I think we're voting for the benefit of all. Having said that, I guess as more information is provided to the school committee from various sources, which continually are updating the background of this particular problem. And, you know, at this point, the schedule that I saw on the screen for our decision may be too soon for some and maybe too late for others. But I, I do think that we should also weigh the fact that for Thanksgiving and for the Christmas holidays, that people travel in and therefore will be exposed to other populations other than our highly vaccinated population here in Westboro. And I think that does make a difference in terms of what our decisions would be and how long we might wait. Or perhaps we selectively decide during a certain period after Thanksgiving and a certain period after Christmas that we go back to wear masks if we've already removed them prior to that time. Because I think it's in the best interest of the community that we do so. And after a week or two after that event, if there aren't any other impacts of it, then we could go back to whatever the vote of the school committee would be. But I think, again, as a member of the school committee, our interest is in the best interest of our students. And for those who don't accept a positive decision to remove masks, if that's the outcome of the school committee, have the opportunity to protect themselves from this risk if they choose not to be vaccinated. I think that's the common sense logic of how we get from here to there. So those are my thoughts on, on how to make a decision, what to do. Thank you.
So the one, when it comes to the holiday, I agree with Steve that people come from out of town far and wide and it seems like a increased risk that, that makes it that we're not living in a bubble for that week. Because what does it mean that exposure is increased over that long break? And so I guess, I'm not sure we should make a decision right this moment, but I do also believe that the ability to unmask and mask is part of the flexibility, that this perception that if we go to flexible masking and students take off their masks or staff takes off their mask with, by choice, having been vaccinated, that we should have that flexibility to go back to masking, should at any point the metrics tell us that we need to switch back. And I don't want, I guess my personal opinion is to get comfortable with both is part of that flexibility. So I guess I'm in agreement that post Thanksgiving, I'm also someone who says, let's not make a decision about, I've learned from our past, let's not make a decision about that next step until we need to make that decision based on whatever's happening. You know, I think things happen, things have changed so quickly during this past 20 months that to make decisions way ahead of time feel like we should learn from that, that they happen so quickly that we should be making decisions closer to when we need to.
Yeah, we're not making a decision tonight.
It's really just the timing, the Thanksgiving holiday falls like right, like if we go to flexible mask, there's about four days and then you come back and you put the mask on again. So it just seems...
And flexible masking means that a student can wear, or a faculty member can wear a mask at any time. So if they want to wear a mask prior to traveling for Thanksgiving, they could wear one in school before they head off to travel. So again, a lot to talk about. I know Amber will be making the rounds to all the groups to gather the information, particularly with Board of Health and Safety Committee and, you know, continuing to stay in relationship with Labor Board. And I'm sure we will continue to hear from our family and friends and residents and citizens on the masking.
Looks like next meeting, if we have both budget and masking on the agenda, we'll be here till 10:30.
No, we will not.
We will streamline other choices.
No.
That's right.
Not if I'm running the meeting.
Efficient meeting, here you go.
It does like an efficient meeting. So on that note, so we're going to pass over again the Asabet Valley Collaborative Quarterly Update and we'll put that back on the agenda when that is ready. So... So the next meeting of the school committee will be Wednesday, November 17th. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Adjourned meeting?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.